Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Norfolk County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. February twenty-sixth, twenty-two. We just missed Christmas, right? So, um, uh, welcome. And, uh, pursuant to the executive order on remote participation on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Votes may be taken on any of the content, uh, listed in the, uh, meeting agenda. Uh, so a call to order, um. We have, uh, plates of believers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Michael, you want to read us some plate of believers?
I am the agent to the flag, the United States of America, and to your government, which stands on a nation under God, it is the liberty of justice, fraud.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Stady?
I am present.
And I am President Peter Collins, the President. So we have a quorum. Uh, Commissioner Shea is out of state on county business. So, uh, we were supposed to go into an executive session, so, um, Peter Summers is our attorney. Peter, I'm just gonna ask you to hold on a couple of minutes. We have two quick budget things that we could tackle in just a couple of minutes, and then we'll get to the executive session. So, um, the first is the budget for the Treasurer's Office. So, Michael and Joe, if you want to come on up?
Thank you. Thank you very much for taking us out of the way. So, you know, essentially, the budget is, uh, there's no dramatic changes to it. And I'll give some details, and Joe will fill in some of the blanks, and we'll list the questions if you need, if, uh, you do have them. It, it's originally an increase of about four point seven one percent, about twenty-eight thousand dollars, but I think I can find, uh, half of that in savings, but I'll talk to that. As I, as I've been having discussions with, with your staff and with my staff, uh, we understand that there's pressures throughout the whole county, and we want to try to do our part. It's these ongoing and evolving discussions that, uh, I can hopefully lessen in, uh, that number. So I'll go through a few of the things that are going to, uh, impact the budget. We have a, uh, uh, Laurie downstairs works four days a week, and I'd like to increase her to five days a week. That's a, uh, nineteen thousand dollar increase to budget. You know, essentially, as you know, she, uh, does the expense warrants. She works with the vendors, and she's, uh, I've asked her to pick up, because Kylie has so much going on. A few of the responsibilities of Kylie, including, uh, interest for all the grants to banks and the trust accounts. And they asked her to kind of do some cross-training with Kylie, too. I mean, also, I mean, she, she does that, but, um, we wanted to do more of that with Kylie and take more of that workload off and pick up, uh, all the bank reconciliations. So that would be a one-day increase for Laurie. And a number two is longevity. Uh, we have somebody, nine hundred dollars, Joe?
Yeah, Kylie.
Kylie, because of longevity, so that's, that's something that, uh, isn't discretionary. Uh, printing and binding services is increased by two hundred dollars. Joe will tell you, it's costly to recall payroll records from stores. The company now charges service fee every time we do it, or we ask for records. There is a payroll, uh, consultant line, and I'll talk about that momentarily. Uh, P O box rent is increased by a hundred dollars, and the computer equipment was decreased by two hundred dollars to offset the increase, and I did it three times. So, uh, if you look at the actual budget, there is a line item in there for temperature, uh, temp salaries, fifteen thousand dollars. That's, that's interns. Last year, we had Gavin here, and I think he helped you guys out a lot. I don't need an intern, and I, but I, but I do want to justify some of the increased expenses, so I am happily willing to remove that line item. Okay, so will we present the budget officially? Is that the best way to do it, John? Well, you know, did I have to bottom this today?
No.
No, so will we present it? Okay, good. So, uh, in, in the payroll consulting line item, eight thousand dollars. That's really to help me do a workflow analysis to see how we interact with all the departments in Norfolk County, and maybe we can, uh, increase some efficiencies there. But it's also, I hope Joe never leaves, but, uh, I can never, I don't know how long it's gonna stay. We, we've been saying this for, for four years, but at some point, he's, he's going to leave. You know, it's a function of his wife and his grandkids, and, uh, it really is his desire to leave. So I'd like to have in there the ability to, uh, make sure that, as we transition, uh, that, uh, I have somebody kind of working with me and Joe, looking at all these other efficiencies around the county and creating a job description that, uh, you know, obviously we have one in place now, but one that's really to the detail, uh, accurate. It allows me to better find a replacement for him when that time comes. And, and when that, and again, it's up to him, because we know, we know that Joe's been here many years, uh, but I don't want to be caught off guard, right? And I don't want to put pressure on him if he decides he wants to leave in a couple of months, you know, six months from now, eight months a year. So I just want to get something ready.
For five years. Yeah, sure.
It's, it, uh, so that's, that gives me a little, uh, breathing room to do that. And then at some point, if we do bring in another Assistant Treasurer, uh, I would find, I'd like to have Joe to kind of hang around a little bit. They train that person. So those are the justifications for that particular item and for everything else. And again, uh, I am happily willing and, uh, to take out the temp salaries.
Okay.
We're gonna increase down to like two percent, two something.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you think it's wise, though, based on what you're saying, I'm not trying to give it to Joe, no. But what Joe said to you in August, I'm out of here, whatever you, I'm thinking of Christmas time. Wouldn't it be good to save a little bit of money in temporary salary in case you need to hire somebody? You know, train or whatever, or is that a different category that doesn't fit?
Uh, I don't know, Joe. What do you think? I mean, would, would that even be a line item that we could use that way, in your experience?
Well, no, I mean, if you hired someone, you would be hiring them as a permanent salary position, but
Right.
So you would have to add, we would have to add to the permanent.
But I guess what he's saying is, I'd love you to stay out, when the time comes, to stay on and overlap. But I don't want, again, I'm just trying to do my part here, in relative to what's going on, so I'll leave that up to you.
Okay. You, you're okay if we took the whole fifty thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Good to know.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because in essence, we use a lot of that money for an intern, that I think is some great work for you guys, right?
Yeah.
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 Oh, we did.
So, okay, uh, that's it for me.
It's pretty easy.
Charlie, anything you want to add?
Um, the only thing I will add is in the budget now, with that, that consultant lines, is the, it says payroll consultant. It's, that's the old description. It's just, I already talked to Phil about, like, changing it to just, you know, consultant services.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Patrick, come on up. Let's get you on.
I'll move that we, uh, take the
Matter under, but
The, the budget.
Thank you, guys.
Motion second. Oh, favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Patrick, come on up. Let's get you out of here.
Hey, Commissioners.
Okay, so I heard your budget's essentially the same, and you have one item.
Uh, two.
Two, yes. Tell me about them.
And capital. So, uh, uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'd like to present the fiscal two thousand and twenty-six Engineering Department, um, for its budget for your review, uh, and consideration. Basically, uh, we're request, everything is, um, level funded, in the, except for two items and the, uh, two line items. One is, um, in the operating budget, it's a increase from twenty thousand to twenty-three thousand dollars for, um, software subscriptions and maintenance. Uh, they keep going up, uh, getting more costly, so, and, and, uh, so that we're going to twenty to twenty-three, that's about two percent increase. And then the other line item was in the, um, permanent salaries. So I, as part of the ABM reports, um, you know, due to fiscal constraints in the past couple of years, we haven't been able to grow the department and add in, uh, more field services. So my request would be to add in the, um, permanent, uh, position in a, a Service Crew Chief at, uh, seventy-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And that's at the maximum range, so that we can try and bring in somebody with experience. And that increase for the personal salary would be about fifteen percent. So those two combined, uh, overall, with the, a total department budget would be increased, if we were, they were approved, would be about twelve and a half percent to the budget, I believe, so.
All right.
If they're approved. And then I have a capital request, depending on available funds, uh, for, uh, items. Like, the biggest one is, uh, I think about sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars for a plotter. Let's be honest, um, life cycle, or it's due to replacement. The other ones are a little bit, um. So that, that's it, and that, and that's all.
Okay. Richard, any questions?
Um, yeah, one, we'd obviously, obviously want, uh, justification for the new person in terms of overall workload or productivity, with all due respect. Is the workload going up? Are we doing more work for towns, and is it something you can show? You know, not just to us, but
Yeah, so I'm, I'm limited on the jobs I can take in, based off the amount of people. I only have people that are supposed to work in the office, working in the field. So instead of, I, I think, uh, touch base on that. I have a, a Senior Crew Chief and a, and a Service Crew Chief working, and they work in the field and in the office. And then I have one of my project managers and a Senior Project Manager that go out in the field and help with the field work. So when they're all in the field and being productive in the field, but nothing in the office is turning. So it's for us, for efficiency purposes, I need, like to have that third crew chief, and, and I can keep the wheels rolling out in the field.
This has always been a big demand.
Yeah. So it would actually increase productivity?
Yes.
Okay.
For, for county-related projects in-house, and then, and then for the towns.
Yeah.
So it limits the, the volume of work and the size of work that we can do.
Okay. And the salary for that person was what?
Seventy-six thousand, six thirty. So, uh, it was in the budget previously, but then due to budget, uh, issues in the last couple of years, we had a, uh, it was
You had to cut it out?
Yep.
Yeah. Want to take it under advisement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion, take it under advisement. Second, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Patrick. You're, you're good to go.
Thank you.
And Peter, we're gonna jump to you, if that's okay. We're gonna go to item three. Do you want to make the motion for, um, item three?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you. Uh, this is Chairman, I'm moving to executive, go to executive session. Pursuant to Master in the launch chapter three oh, thirty A, Section Twenty-one, A three. Discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Okay, so motion has been made.
Right.
I'll second the motion. We go to roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes, so we have now an executive session, and, uh, John, if you can get the All right, very good.
Now, we taking the electrical gas?
Yeah, sure, let's do that. You know, let's take that.
Yeah.
Well, you know what? Let's, let's, let's just follow along, because, um, item four, minutes, I'm gonna add. So on item four, minutes, that was, uh, two sets of minutes from last week, and I wasn't here.
Okay.
So we had to both, we had to hold them for next week anyway.
Right.
All right, so that'll just go for next week.
That's right.
The next one was appointments, and John, I don't believe we have any appointments.
We do.
Uh, I was gonna, I take it back. We're with our appointments now.
Well, minutes, minutes, um, I'll make a motion table, we, we, we do that. We back a session?
Yeah, so motions have been made to table the minutes till next week.
Yes, Mr. Shea's on.
Roll call. Uh, yes, yes, the minutes have been tabled till next week. Okay, appointments, two o'clock, presentation from Port Energy LLC, car charging stations at county properties. We're up.
All right, you're up.
There you go.
Okay.
Are we gonna show here, or are we gonna just?
Well, two of that can sit here, and whatever you want.
No, I just want to display the presentation.
Yeah, it's, did you talk to Billy about doing that?
We have an electronic
I'll bring it up.
So you're gonna do this, uh, display for them, please? Please? Somebody should come up.
Right, somebody should come up.
Yeah.
Okay, Nick, do a quick intro before we start. How much time do we have, sir?
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay, great.
I'll just start, just because I'm with Port Energy, and I also sell East Coast. I do both. I work for both organizations. There's two different divisions, and I, all my green energy business, I work with Nick through East Coast Renewable. He's the owner and the president of East Coast. And Rob
Well, you decide who wants to make the presentation.
I'm gonna be
Yeah, let me let Rob do that.
Rob will do the presentation. I just wanted to give you that.
Well, it's not with introduction for the record, though. Let's start with that.
Yeah.
Sure, for the record.
Yeah, so Ed McCall, and I'm with Port Energy.
Right.
So Nick Valory, uh, company's called East Coast Renewable Energy, we're located in Milford, Massachusetts. Been in business since two thousand and twenty-one. We do a range of renewable energy stuff from solar installation, EV charging, battery storage, third-party supply. This is Robert.
Robert Quittell, I'm the EV Division of E C R E, we call E S E Solutions.
According to the Yeah. I was looking through the G L, and the summer pay account that's used for two oh one funds. It looks like it's still carrying the prior year balance.
Excuse me, Joe?
Okay. Gloria, Joseph, you gotta mute yourself.
There we go. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, quickly to the point. So, uh, next slide, please. Do we have a way to?
Yeah, we're doing it now.
Great, thank you. All right, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time today talking about what a lot of EV specialists talk about, and that is how many EVs there are on the road, where we're going. I think we all understand in this room, EVs are going, we're, we're going electrification. The state of Massachusetts is one of the most progressive states in the entire United States as far, we actually have executive orders. Uh, as an example, I'm showing five ninety-four, which is the fleet readiness for all state vehicles. And my message here is this is trickling down into the cities, towns, and municipalities. So over the coming years, we're seeing fleet electrification, not only from passenger vehicles for residents, but for city, town, and municipal vehicles as well. Next slide, please. So in Massachusetts, we have an abundance of different funding mechanisms that are, uh, that are funded through the investor-owned utilities. Um, we have eleven different iterations of EV charging programs, and when I say programs, I mean rebate or incentive programs, ways to tap into funds to help pay for the installation of these charging stations. Um, there's a four hundred million dollar over-three-year spend of investor, of investor-owned utility dollars that are essentially, that's ratepayer money that are paying to install these, or, you know, subsidizing the installation of these stations. In general, they're categorizing what we call Level Two charging stations and D C fast charging stations. The investor-owned utility money is, uh, managed through Eversource. If you're in the Eversource territory, National Grid, obviously, which is where we sit here, and Unitil, those are the three I O U's. And then there's a separate pot of money that's managed through Mass D E P, which is called Mass E V I P. That stands for the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program. So we love to have new acronyms. I thought I would introduce you to a few today. Next slide, please.
What's a Level Two, by the way?
We're gonna, um, okay, thank you. Look at that, right on cue.
All right.
All right. Let, before I get into how the incentive programs work and how that ties into the county's potential plans, uh, for launching and installation. Uh, basically, Level One charging is the, is the charger that comes with the electric vehicle. Um, it would be like your golf cart charger that you purchase, right? And it's, uh, it's a hundred and twenty volts, and it's gonna take anywhere from twenty to thirty hours to fully charge the vehicle. So most folks, the first thing they do when they buy an electric vehicle is they have a two forty-volt dryer outlet installed in their garage, and they purchase a Level Two charger on Amazon for three or four hundred dollars. And now I can plug in my electric vehicle every day when I come home, and when I wake up in the morning, every day, I've got a full tank of gas. So Level Two, between home charging and workplace charging, will represent, over time, about eighty percent of the charging needs across the country. Then we have what's called D C fast charging. This is your road tripping. This is your Tesla supercharging stations. These are your high-power, uh, polo pull into the Mass Pike, where there are D C fast chargers located at the service areas. And you've got a twenty to twenty-five minute, maybe a thirty-minute charge time. You get a coffee, you use the restroom, check your email, you come out and you go, you're up to eighty, ninety, or a hundred percent of your charge. So the categorically, we're really, the incentives and what we're talking about for public charging are Level Two and D C fast charging. And that's where the utility and, uh, Mass E V I P rebates are geared toward. Uh, next slide, please. So the rebate summary as of February two thousand and twenty-five, just to bring everybody up to speed. I mentioned there were four hundred million dollars of investor-owned utility dollars that are being spent across the state for electrification. That is all just for chargers, not for vehicles. Uh, the D C fast programs are, are, for the most part, are fully subscribed. There is a waitlist opportunity for National Grid, so we could work with you on, on that. Eversource is really, is they're done. They're, they're so oversubscribed. Funds are available for fleet charging, and when I say fleet charging, that means that the city, town, or municipality has to either already own an electric vehicle, or has an electric, minimum of one electric vehicle on order, and is progressing into a fleet conversion over time. Level Two incentives are also fully subscribed. For most categories, there are dollars available for multi-unit dwellings, multi-family, and environmental justice communities. But in general, really, the money that's available, that we're able to help you scale plans for electric vehicle charging installation today are through the Mass E V I P program. So that's really what we're gonna focus on today. Level Two incentives under Mass E V I P, um, are attractive for a lot of reasons. One is that typically, not a lot of major electrical infrastructure work is required. Rarely do we really need to tap into, you know, a new transformer with a new service for what we're gonna be presenting to you today. I mentioned to you that eighty percent of all charging will be Level Two. So we think that from a roadmap standpoint, it's, it's the best way to start an overall plan. And I will just end this slide with telling you that the investor-owned utilities currently have a filing in front of the state regulators, um, where they're asking for more money, and they're asking to refocus the funds more to Level Two away from D C fast, but tied to that is a request for a rate increase. So I wouldn't expect to see anything positive anytime soon. I, we're thinking it's gonna be months before the regulators rule on a, any type of rate increase to pay for this. Next slide, please. So let's talk about a proposed strat. What do we do now, right? So we understand where the monies are available. We understand where the monies are not available. So let's talk about building out a strategy for EV charging for cities, towns, and communities. I look at three kind of points here that are important. One is why do we want EV charging? Community benefit. And if we're gonna pursue an overall strategy and a plan, we want to make it impactful. Um, throwing one or two chargers in a community parking garage, or a city parking garage is nice, but that doesn't really get us to where we need to be as far as demonstrating that the city, town, community, or the county has a well-thought-of strategy and a roadmap. And then thirdly would be the plan and develop for fleet conversion, which is a little bit longer-term planning. Next slide, please. Okay, so community benefit. Obviously, the benefits are, are high visibility, that the county is providing vital services and utilizing massive rebate money, getting a high-value return on their investment. Next slide, please. Scale for impact, EV charging, and to try to get EV charging in as many public locations as feasible, at little or no cost, right? So we want to try to get these at the ballfields, the parks, the library, the rec centers, city hall, so that there's a strategy that shows that we've got scale to really impact the community, rather than sort of just dropping dots on a map and throwing a charger willy-hilly. Next slide, please. And then last but not least, plan and develop for fleet conversion. That involves vehicle lease purchase arrangements. It's a, it's a, it's a larger-scale infrastructure upgrade. Utility is now at the table, with all of us planning on a new service with a four-eighty-volt transformer and a timeline to accomplish that, uh, and to, uh, ensure that there is electrical capacity in that area to be able to even pursue looking at four-eighty-volt charging, so there's a more collaborative effort. Uh, we like to get involved in all aspects of strategy, but we also understand how to prioritize that and start with what we could do today, and then build towards the future. Next slide, please. Okay, so highly visible and meaningful EV charging. Let's talk about where the rubber hits the road here, scale for impact. So we've built an EV charging, what I call a starter kit, to get charging to as many locations as possible at little or no cost. How does that work? We utilize the Mass E V I P incentive, and we design four parking spaces. So that would be two dual-port, Level Two chargers for every government address, and we're able to provide that at zero out-of-pocket cost. So if you had ten locations or ten courthouses you wanted to consider, um, we would propose coming in and putting in four electrified parking spots, and it would be zero out-of-pocket cost for each one of those addresses. Um, this consists, as, as I said, of two dual-port, fully-equipped network stations. Revenue is generated from the charging session, from the driver plugging in and using their Apple Pay or their charge card or whatever to be able to pay for that charge. So ninety percent of that revenue from the driver fee can go to the county. It can go into a rainy day EV account. It can go to building out the future additional stations. And this is a very attractive option, because ten percent of the rev, you're wondering where the other ten percent goes. That goes back to the manufacturer who runs the network, that collects all of the revenue and disperses it back to the county at zero annual license fee. So you don't get an annual bill like you would with your Microsoft Office comes up for renewal, right? All software costs money. This is a, a way to defer costs away from the cities, towns, and the county, so that you're not getting hit with hidden charges. Um, I also would point out
Who owns those, uh, sorry, who owns the, um, the charging thing, so, like, who owns them?
The scenario that we're presenting here, the city, town, or the county owns, when, once we're done with the turnkey installation, we hand the keys over.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're yours. Now, we do have options where we can own and operate the stations, which we are happy to talk about if, if you're interested.
How, how long are these, you're good, bro? It's another question, yeah.
These Level Two chargers are roughly five-year life.
Five years, okay.
So we bring, we wrap a five-year warranty around it, and, yeah, it's, it's like a laptop computer or a cell phone, I can perfectly correct.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Uh, we've built this zero-out-of-pocket cost with some assumptions, okay? Because there are always going to be unique situations. So what we did is we factored in up to a hundred and fifty feet of trenching from the power to the charger, the actual charger station location. So when we're out doing sidewalks, we're factoring all of this into where the charger, where's the visitor parking, where's the ideal location? Where, where can we keep this at zero cost? So just to give you a little bit of an asterisk there, but in general, um, we could probably get anywhere from sixty to seventy percent of the sidewalks that we do to work under this zero-out-of-pocket, and then the outliers, we can revisit that as a separate. You know, there may be some electrical infrastructure out-of-pocket cost that we can deal with as a separate bid or whatever. Uh, next slide, please. Ready, there we go. So planning and developing, so now, once we're, we've, we've got this underway, we've got, uh, community visibility, there's a roadmap in place, and now we can start working with you hand in hand, and, and with National Grid. We bring them to the table. They're a key partner in all of this.
And Eversource is in the county as well.
I'm sorry, and, right, right. Both utilities have an active, uh, point of contact that we work with that specialize in fleet electrification, and we bring them to the, to the table as part of the team. So, but we, we're, we're the hands on, or the boots on the ground with regard to the design and the coordination of the charger itself and the location, et cetera, uh, equipment selection, warranty, all of those things. But we, you know, the utility is a key component to this. Um, just to give you a, a general rule of thumb, once Mass E V I P approves a site rebate application, we can typically install these projects in two to three days on Level Two. When you get into the D C fast, we're talking about typically a nine to twelve month from breaking of ground to completion. And again, because we're talking about a new four-eighty-volt service, and so there's, there's much more make-ready um, involvement on the D C fast, so that, as you can imagine, the planning stage for fleets is, you can see why it's linked here.
There's no real fleet applications in the county. We already reviewed that, just
Oh, great, yeah, okay, terrific. Next slide, please. I think I might be done. Forget.
Yeah.
That might have been the last one.
Yeah, it is.
So I'm open for questions, comments?
So the, what do you got? Yeah, the lower one is pretty easy to solve.
Yes.
Higher one would take a little while.
Exactly.
Makes sense. What would be needed on our end to make this thing happen?
So what we generally like to start with is a list of, you know, the most appropriate properties that you would like us to embark on a sidewalk. And then we just need a coordinated effort at your level to make sure that we've got the right folks. Typically, all we really need to do is have access to the electric panel, and then somebody on site who is with us to be able to say, we'd like the chargers here versus over here. You know, we don't want to make the final selection decision, but we also want to weigh in on the fact that, hey, if we can keep this to, you know, we're, we're trenching a hundred and fifty feet, where, if we're going across Main Street to the visitor parking, you, you know what I mean? So we want to have some weigh-in on that.
Yeah.
Other than that, I mean, it's, it's not a complicated process, but we do need access, because we're basing this on the fact that, um, we're able to tap off using existing available power. Um, we're able to tap off using existing available power from available panels, so.
We had a informal meeting before with uh, with a Zoom call.
Right.
And we talked about the court um, buildings being used, which would be, there's one in Stone. Uh, there's a Renton District Court, Brookline District Court.
Yep.
Uh, of course, we have Dedham and. Registry of deeds and we have the Aggie School and then we have the golf course, so.
Yep.
Potentially, you know.
Those are great, great.
We have all those addresses.
Okay, so that's the list that you provided.
The list that you, yep.
I mean, that would be a great starting point.
In fact, I think I had a quick call with uh, John McGowan the other day and he said that they had already. And in anticipating this, like some other talk, they had even looked at potential parking areas. For uh, the solar charging thing, so not solar.
Okay.
So, you know, we got a little jumpstart of it. The main thing would be again, looking at the electrical bills and looking at the connectivity, right?
Right.
Because that does factor in.
Yeah.
I'm for it. I want to get going on this, a big program.
Sir.
I know that um, so we had actually voted on this previously, uh, not with your group, but we had talked about this and. I think we talked about having one at the registry as a starter, just to check it out and see how it went.
Mm hmm.
And then looking at the other locations, I think that's what you talked about before.
Right, but my point was that, and I agree, we did say that. Um, but if they are doing the work, want to have just look at everything, maybe can move quickly on it, you know what I'm saying? Um, maybe there's an advantage in doing that?
Well, there is.
Just advantage.
I mean, the urgency, the urgency is this.
Yeah.
If you can get them at no cost, that funding, just think of all the cities and towns are going to be taking advantage of it. This funding will not be.
It's first come, first served, so we're, yeah. That's part A. Part B would be, we'd love to look at a portfolio because a hundred percent of that portfolio that we look at is not going to be. Exactly suitable, there may be some extenuating circumstances. There may be, say, an older court building may have some existing code issues that come up. So what we'd like to do is say, let's look at ten and then maybe there's three or four that are just, this is. You know, really, really sweet spot, perfect opportunity. And then we would present you at that time with a final proposal. We would come back and report and say, okay, we looked at these eight. We looked at schools the other day for Blackstone Millville. We started the high school, they've got asbestos, okay, well. So try to pipe and get power out of that with asbestos remediation and everything. So you you know, you don't know until you get in these buildings and kind of see what the existing circumstances are. You you can tell pretty quickly that this is going to be an absolute home run versus, okay, so let's prioritize and go after those zero out of pocket. Get rebate applications into the state, which earmarks the funds for you. And then they give you, uh, I believe it's nine months to execute the project. So you're not even fully committed at that point, basically, but the money is earmarked for. You know, for these projects. So our our goal would be to try to get, you know, get your name on as ma- on as many dollars as possible for the locations that makes sense.
How many sites could you visit in a day for like site surveys?
Oh, Chad and I are pretty, pretty good. Uh, depend, you know, geographically, if we're in one county, we could probably look at six, eight a day.
Yeah, easy.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it all comes down to the coordination effort on the other side is, you know, we've got somebody who's with us with keys, getting us into panels.
Yep.
Walking outside, it's literally could be a fifteen minute sidewalk.
Yeah.
Um, so.
John, you want to say something?
Yeah, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I do recall having a conversation with that. I want to clarify what the grant through the state is offering.
Yes.
In terms of specificity, because as Peter mentioned, we had previously engaged to another vendor for the same purpose. We received notice from that vendor in December. But the state grant to fund DC fast chargers had dried up, is that accurate?
Yes.
So are we not talking about fast charges under your program right now for your charge?
That's correct. We're talking about level two. The gentleman behind you is saying something.
So we're talking about this call, this meeting has been primarily on level twos. But in national grid, we can do the level three fleet, but not public access. So this, so the gentleman you were talking to, whoever it may have been, was correct that the level three fleet, um, level three. Public access incentive is filled.
Right.
Now, they are, as Robert had mentioned, it is out there that they're going to replenish the money. I was told by national grid should be replenished by the summer of this year. However, more likely next year, okay? We won't know that, but the fleet opportunity is available.
Right, and as I pointed out, we're not in the fleet business, we don't have.
No.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to address your question.
Can I just make one correction? Not correction, but just elaborating, but so your previous vendor was absolutely right, but it wasn't the state grant money that dried up. You see. No, no, it was the utility, national grid and ever source money. Which is the investor owned utility money that comes from the rate payers. That got fully subscribed.
Re- regarding level twos, um, your program offers that to us today.
Yeah.
The other distinction this private vendor mentioned was that the only path to that opportunity was on street charging. That was a distinction he made to us in December. I'm aware of those restrictions on the level two applications.
There's no.
Because in this case, we don't have, we don't own the streets, we can't put chargers on the street side. They have to be in public lots as as described.
The only requirement is that they have to be publicly accessible.
It's an interesting.
Yeah, now there are, there's a separate grant program right now for on-street charging. It's a pilot program and they're accepting up to twenty-five cities and towns. To sign up for this and this is a subs- totally unique program in the sense to your point that there would be. Electrification along the downtown parking where you've got beaver parking and there's nowhere, where would you get the power? To be able to power these? That's a whole, that's a new program, I'm happy to share it with you. We don't participate in that, they've got a separate vendor that does that. What we're talking about is is public charging at any government location. So like what you mentioned, the list that we have now is a great starting point.
So, um, so I'm going to dumb it down for me, right? So I I saw that this is level two and the level two is the higher end that people would have at their house and they charge overnight. So if somebody pulled into the registry.
Hmm.
And they wanted to, you know, fill up with the electrical current. Um, how much, how much power would they get if they were here for like a day?
That's a really good question. So. Depending upon the size of the vehicle, the range is going to be anywhere between twenty-five to seventy-five. Miles per hour of charge gain.
Okay.
So if you've got a Hummer that with a giant battery pack, it may only gain twenty to thirty charge. Miles per hour. And that's why level two generally fits and when we talk about eighty percent of charging will be level two. It's really based on dwell time. So if I'm a school, a courthouse, anywhere, a golf course, anywhere where I'm going to be, my car is idle for more than a couple of hours. Level two is the right selection. If I'm staying overnight at a at a hotel and I want to plug in. I don't want a twenty minute charge because then I have to come out and move my car. So it's all application specific. Um, but to your point, yeah, so schools, workplace charging. A courthouse, right, where court's going to be in session and folks are going to be in there for two, three, four hours. Perfect for level two charging.
What happens after a certain amount of time? Do people get dinged if they don't move their car?
So there's a way through the software to set up what's called an idle charge. And they'll get a notification on their phone that says, your car is now fully charged, you have fifteen minutes to move it from the spot. Or else you're going to get billed at whatever you want to charge them. You could charge them a a dollar a minute for staying overtime. Um, but yes, that's a very common. Uh, mechanism in the networking software to be able to, you can set the charge rate, what you want to charge the driver. You could set, we want all city employee vehicles to be, to have no charge, right? And but we want the public is going to get charged thirty-five cents a kilowatt hour for their charge. All of that is done through the networking software. That's why their software is such an important component of this.
Okay, would it make sense for you as a team to look at some of that information? And maybe visit the sites with somebody and then come back and make a decision as to what we want to do?
Yeah, well, then we'll be able to lay out which ones we'll be able to deliver cost for.
Yeah, that would be our, our action.
So do we need some kind of a vote to that effect? To basically say we would.
I would recommend a vote by the commission.
You know what, um, so I I would just suggest Richard, because this is a big, this is a big topic. And the chairman will be here next week, I would just hold off the vote till next week. On this, I I have no problem with it. I, in fact, I like the whole idea, but um, I think the chairman ought to weigh in on that, just to make sure that. He he's our chairman.
Okay. Right, excuse me, I just want to add one point.
Sure.
And when it comes to the charging stations, currently the DC fast chargers do not charge. Quite frankly, the most popular vehicle out there, which is the hybrids. You have to have the level twos for the hybrids.
Okay.
So even though I am a full proponent of the DC fast, because I have two electric vehicles. The hybrids won't be caught charging. The the level two, so the level twos are always going to have a a major value. Because that's how the hybrids charge.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
So I think that's a, it's a very important topic to understand. Even though, again, I am a huge proponent of the DC fast everywhere, if the incentive was there. But having level twos is, I think, mandatory.
So the DC fast, they they can't dumb it down to work on the hybrids?
Currently, no, but you might, if there's anything pop up, yeah, currently, no, it doesn't do that. So it's only the level twos that will do the hybrids.
Okay.
And. There's a lot of cars out there that are hybrid capability because of the infrastructure nationwide. Of not having charging stations, but within the fast charging station.
So I would recommend after the chairman is, if we briefed on this next week.
Yeah.
We would typically be scheduling um, site walkers for probably about two to three weeks after that. So we we. We kind of fill up our week with sidewalks, so our next opening would be, so after you notify us, we'll we'll put you in the schedule.
Might be helpful if one of you is following up for the, like just again, a quick note, which is what you're looking for. And if we can do it expedite, that would be good. And the of course, chair's approval.
Sure, great, you'll be for the site visits.
Yeah, just a site visit and information.
Yep.
You keep talking about information, but I think if we could, we had to coordinate that with our our maintenance people.
Right.
Make sure someone's there and what time you'd be there, that kind of thing, that gets into nothing.
Two to three weeks enough timeframe?
Should be enough, yeah.
Okay, good, great, awesome.
Let me see, you got, you got, you got three buildings right here.
Right.
So apart from looking at one parking lot.
Yeah, right, right.
We were, we were talking about looking the area we call behind the registry of deeds. That's like one site right there.
Right.
And then you're only looking at, that's one. The other site is Renton Court, that's a visit. It's down in Renton, Stone Court, that's in Stone, that's a visit. That's it, be a course. The other two would be the Aggie School, visit, and the golf course, five visits.
Great.
Five places.
That's one day, terrific.
Oh, Brookline, right.
It always um, blew my mind that Brookline was part of the North Fork.
I wouldn't have guessed that either.
Long story.
Is it?
A long story.
Is it really? I mean, is there something behind that?
Yeah, so uh, what had happened was. Uh, Brookline and Hyde Park and all these other towns were part of Norfolk County. And uh, asked us, Hingham, and uh, and they decided. They decided that they they didn't want to be part of Norfolk County, they were wooed away by the city of Boston for better schools and streets and things like that.
Hmm.
And Hingham uh, decided that they'd rather take a ferry to Boston than drive horse and buggy to Dedham. Uh, for the courts.
Hmm, is Hingham in?
No, then they decided, then they decided they didn't like Suffolk Avenue, they went to, they went to.
Yeah, right.
Those are trade up.
Yeah.
We got coacid.
We're the only non-contiguous county, um, county in the state.
Only in Mass.
Yeah, coacid's not part of it, doesn't touch. As I literally look at coacid, it's not contiguous with the rest of the county.
Yeah.
Weird.
One last thing before we leave. I just want to let you guys know that I think next week we're installing uh, DC fast chargers uh, in Renton.
Oh, okay.
So in Renton, we should have, I think, three or four different locations going in.
Right.
So probably within two weeks, they should be. Uh, all hundred percent installed, not powered up. Takes a little while for national grid to power them up. But uh, probably by the time you guys make your decision, if you guys want to drive by.
Hmm.
Um, some of the locations, we should be happy to send you the locations. Um, they should be installed and you'll be able to really see what's going on.
It's private property.
Town properties, I think one is uh, behind the town hall, the other one that I can think of is um. If you come out of the town hall and take a right, there's an open parking lot. There was an unpaid parking lot and we're putting three, I think, three or four chargers.
Oh, it's brand new, I know what it is.
Yeah.
They use Apple money to build that. They did, it's brand new, it's very nice. Yeah, that makes sense, a good spot for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So there are, we are uh, those ones will be installed um, next week.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, really, nice job. Good presentation.
Next one.
All right, we'll be touched, all right? Okay, yeah, go ahead, send me something, take care.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
That would be awkward.
Nice job today, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Robert, it is your day and you're technically next. Uh, how long is your presentation going to be? Your call.
As short as you want.
Okay.
So let me say a couple words. Like two minutes.
Oh, no, 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 come on up, come on.
What's, I'm sorry?
Business cards are in?
Uh, you can if you want.
I don't think you guys need any.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, I know you're having a very, very busy day.
Do you want to have your wife come up and join us? Come on.
Sure, come on, if you want, Ellen could be where she wants. I want to thank you for your acknowledgement today, plus welcoming my wife Ellen. Uh, who has been part of the business today and gets to see. Right now, county uh, operations in action.
Go ahead, help her.
So this is my final RSVP report and I'm glad to just give you a couple minutes of updates. Of what's happening, especially with Lucille on board now. We, as we stand, have a hundred and ninety-two volunteers placed in two hundred and twenty-one active placements. Some, a few of them, about twenty percent have more than one placement. Two hundred and twenty-one volunteer opportunities that they fill. And we currently have an RSVP advisory board of ten active members who we have organized. To help Lucille, our new RSVP director in specific areas, one around the grant, one around uh, gift card mailing. Another one around program surveys. Uh, our flagship program, rides for vets, uh, which we're very proud of. We started that ten years ago with ten active drivers and now we have forty-eight active drivers, if you include two new recently trained ones. Maybe forty-nine, trying to recruit me, uh, but I want to go to Hawaii first before I decide. Uh, so we've uh, given nine hundred and seven rides over the past ten months with an average ninety-one rides per month. And that's about the average over the past two, three years. We've averaged ninety plus rides per month. This is an amazing program that not, isn't really available in other counties. We need to limit the amount, number of rides we give because of the demand. And my suggestion is if you want to see the program expand, potentially to hire a part-time person to be exclusively working on. Uh, rides, remember we had a part-time person when Sally O'Connell was here. Uh, to work with rides for vets exclusively. And along with the whole volunteer dispatch system, have more people, so it's not just staff that are spending so much time. Because it's so labor intensive, I mentioned this to Lucille. Uh, so I updated our RSVP policies procedures manual, it's fifty pages, it's a great resource for Lucille. I had requested two weeks of training. Uh, and I'm grateful to uh, to John and Michelle for having arranged. First of all, we found a great candidate in time and I had two solid weeks to train Lucille. Uh, in uh, the primary things, grant financial reporting timelines coming up. Grant and programming resources, partner site, volunteer contacts. The RSVP website newsletter time schedule, key RSVP events. I've even ordered her new name badges and business cards, which have arrived. We made time to go to four volunteer sites in the past week. Dedham and Walpole Council on Aging, South Shore Elder Services in Springwell. And I think Lucille is definitely going to increase the visibility of the RSVP program in the county. And through time is going to be great. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Uh, this ten and a half years ago to be the RSVP director. I have, I, it's been a dream job, except when I had a couple nightmares. But it's been like overall just uh, tremendous, meaningful opportunity and I'm bringing it forward into my retirement. Don't know if I'll be a rides for vets driver or what, but I'll definitely begin to give it to myself. So thank you.
Thank you.
For your blast, so I, I want to thank you again. I did a fabulous job and I know that um, the manifesto that you gave to John was amazing. It really outlined everything and you've done a terrific job in so many different ways, so um. With with heartfelt thanks, thank you so much for all that you've done and and we hope that you uh, continue to be part of our lives.
Thank you very much. I expect I'll be around here and there. Just real quick, I had a chance earlier this morning to speak to a group in Canton. And uh, I brought up the RCP program specifically to rides for vet. And so many people had so many good comments to say about that, it's a great program.
I brought up the RSVP program specifically to Rides for Vets, and so many people had so many good comments to say about that. It's a great program. So your sentiment about trying to increase it, uh I fully support that. I think it's something that we can't do enough for our vets. And it's a great, great program, and people knew about it, and they were asking questions about it. How do I get it? I said, well, the guy you would have called his name Robert, he's gone. Don't worry about him. But but uh it's it's a great idea, and I think you've just set a very high bar for Lucille to follow. She's gonna be good, and I'm very optimistic working with her, but you've done a wonderful job for everybody. We're gonna definitely appreciate you, and we'll make sure we should have that.
I'll be keeping an eye on you guys, see what's happening. See what's happening in the county.
Now we're in trouble.
Robert, thank you again.
Thank you, Robert. Thanks, everything. Very welcome. Take care.
Thanks.
Enjoy your retirement in Hawaii and everything else. Have fun. All right? All right.
Um I see we get right to right to the registry, Bill. Let's get you out of here. Yes, we did. We did that. We did that for the other um both the engineering and the treasurer's office.
Well, already did get jumped ahead of you.
He jumped ahead of everybody. So so I can't.
Michael, biz Michael.
I can't help myself, Bill, but it it went with Robert leaving. I was thinking like, well, we started, well, at least when I started, you were here a couple years before me, but Dan Chipchase.
Yeah. Rusher. Yeah. A lot of good memories. A lot of good work, too.
Good, good guy.
A lot of good work.
Well, hopefully uh we can approve our budget, my budget down the line. I'd be I'd be happy, camp. We'll go through it anyway a little bit.
Yeah.
Um you know, it's submitted to to each of you on February fourth. So, you know, as as the manager of the registry, you know, the budget that was submitted, I I I hope you'll approve it because I I think it supports uh the operations, the needs, the services the registry has, but also, you know, needs to provide. You know, I do, you know, have to point out, I think the registry's tightened its belt over the years. Uh in fiscal twenty-one, the registry had a budget of uh I believe it was like three hundred, uh three million, six hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. And then last year, uh with the reductions, and there was a reduction in September of twenty twenty-four, uh the fiscal twenty-five budget was three million, eighty-two thousand, six hundred forty dollars and eighty-two cents. So that that's a reduction over time of a half a million dollars. Um so the the budget's been cut, staff positions have been cut. There are forty positions uh down from the forty-eight in fiscal twenty-one. And actually, I was going through last year's budget. There was a chart your your staff uh produced, and the registry was the only department that had staff positions cut, and uh those staff position cuts went from forty-five in fiscal twenty-three to forty-four in fiscal twenty-four, and it was cut again last year uh down to forty positions. So I think the, you know, the registry has uh, you know, contributed. And again, uh you know, I recognize it's your prerogative to to increase staffs in in other parts of the county, that that's your prerogative, but I'm just here to be supportive of this registry budget because uh just out of fairness to the whole process as well as, you know, the service to the registry users uh and residents. Um and 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 when you make cuts, and we've, it's been made, you know, we have to manage it, and but I think I would be remiss if I didn't say both union and non-union registry staff have voiced that staff cuts mean more work for them individually uh without an increase in pay. So um and then to get right into the budget, uh there's other group codes, two, three, and four, and it kind of ties into the supplemental appropriation request that was put in. Groups two, three, and four are integral, uh I think, anyway to providing the services Norfolk registry is known for. Uh but these codes are also integral to the protection of of the registry records, the registry data, and there's over thirteen million registry images. Uh I believe these budget codes are the foundation of registry's responsibilities, which is why I I hope you approve the budget. You know, the titles to the biggest asset, most of the folks that we serve, you know, is is their home and and uh, you know, the protection of the records that that lead to those titles, they're not being enhanced if we continue to make, you know, cuts in in groups two, three, and four. And and why do I bring that up? In in group two, in fiscal twenty-two, the registry spent four hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and seventeen cents. In fiscal twenty-five, it was cut to two hundred thirty thousand dollars, and then there were more cuts made in Sept- on September eleventh, twenty twenty-four to the registry budget. And I guess what I'm saying is you know, the reg, you know, the rubber's hit the road, you know, uh just today, uh February twenty-six, monies were transferred, posted, we asked for a transfer request, which we can do within code. It was only two thousand dollars, but why? Because group three ninety-nine, as of yesterday, only had fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents in that code. And sixty percent of that subgroup, three ninety-nine, was cut in that September eleventh, twenty twenty-four registry budget cuts. So I I guess I'm just making an argument, and and I hope it's adopted, is that even if you, we we put increases in group two, and I've heard other people in other budget presentations talking about inflation, talking about su- supply chain issues, and the registry's no different, but even if uh um even if you go with the number that we have uh in group two, that's still uh almost uh over sixty-eight thousand dollars less than what we spent in fiscal twenty-two. So in other words, if you approve the group two request, you're still under the past amounts that the registry has spent, and I'm not going into fiscal twenty-one where it was five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So um but also approving the budget as submitted will a- avoid the situation that the registry has has been put in. You know, uh with these cuts, we've been left at fiscal twenty-five short of monies to cover registry expenses, services, and contracts. And in December, the supplemental press, you people approved one that came before you. It didn't pass the advisory board, and hopefully, it's supposed to be reconsidered, and I'd like to talk about that. But I I say we should put the money in from the beginning that the registry needs to operate so that we're not in that situation like we are right now. And uh I I think the, you know, what's happening in fiscal twenty-five can be easily avoided if the fiscal twenty-six registry budget that's being submitted is is approved. Now, why do we need increases? Uh you know, one level is, you know, we have, you know, you're spending money to protect, I see Sam's in here, from cybersecurity. The registry needs to be funded to protect the registry records as well, the registry documents, registry indexes. That has nothing to do with cybersecurity. That's just dealing with the records we have, and there are state laws that require us to protect those records. There are state laws that require us uh to do certain things, and complying with state law costs money. And uh for instance, uh iron mountain costs have gone up forty-eight percent since fiscal twenty-two. So your budget approval approval would recognize that we're all dealing with increases in in vendor costs. And as basic as it sounds, the codes I just talked about, two, three, and four, it's all about making sure the registry records aren't changed or corrupted or or altered in any way. And again, that's separate from from cybersecurity and what Sam deals with. So uh I'm just asking you to approve the budget because I I believe it's lean, but I also thinks it I know it makes sure that it takes a better step to making sure that the statutory duties and responsibilities that we have get fulfilled.
Richard, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just uh I want to make sure I got the right numbers on here, though. So the first page I'm looking at, it says fiscal request, three point three million. Am I looking at the right number? Or salaries? Contractual services, supplies, materials?
Yes, yes, that's the total number, and then there's the county mandate, and then the deeds excise.
Right.
On the cover page. Yeah, that's what you're saying under the request.
Right. But that's your request on the budget, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm upset. Do you want to make a motion? Can you take it under revision?
That sounds, that's, sounds good. Give it one second. Give one more thing. Hey, is this, and I get, don't get upset. I get confused at times. I never let it, but is this the one where you identified three different possible ways for funding, or is that something else?
That was fine. Actually, it's it's kind of timely. Yeah, that's Commissioner Stady just referenced.
Yeah, that's it.
This was the letter that went through. Yeah, that's your call. Uh that that has nothing to do with the budget, but it but it kind of touches upon where we find ourselves. So and and maybe it's a good time to talk. We put a request in, uh supplemental appropriation for a hundred twenty thousand.
Right.
And outlined in that is, it's up to you as as far as how you're going to fund it. But there's ways to fund it. First of all, there's savings. Um I I think the most compelling thing, the the registry, you know, has been running lean. I mean, uh this is right off budget sense, and it was attached to that letter that there was over two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh I guess the treasurer's office income is the money, and that's the projection of two hundred, you know, and it could be more. But I guess what I'm saying is, our request is only for one twenty. If we're not spending in group one with the salaries and and things like that, over two hundred and twenty-three thousand, there's money within, you know, there there there's money within to 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 pay. Also, we have the issue of, and it was an issue, still an issue with me, you know, that, the deeds excise. Uh we have deeds excise collections, which was also um attached to to that, you know, to that uh letter that you referenced. I mean, the deeds excise collections for fiscal year twenty-five, the registry statutory share for the general laws is over one point one million.
But that's the one that's the subject of that other lawsuit, isn't it? The deed, the actual deeds excise?
Well, there's two aspects. The deeds excise, the the judge ruled that that the registry gets a share. It's not, and I know some people say it's a hundred percent the county's, forty percent of that.
Yeah.
So while we got the one point one million, you people have got almost one point seven million. So that's one way to pay. How you, it's up to you people to pay.
Okay.
And then the other issue is the three point eight million. The, I mean, the judge's ruling there is, you know, that three point eight million is registry money. So you could use that. That's money that's in in the deeds excise account. Uh but lastly, um I also attached, using the numbers from your minutes, there was four hundred and eighty-four thousand that you could use. The minutes showed you used seventy-one thousand, and and so to me, that's another way to pay for it. And then I also attached, and it's in, again, referenced in the letter, some of the advisory board members were saying, you you people, there was ninety-four thousand dollars of deeds excise money that was put into the general fund at the last meeting, and people were saying, why don't we use that money to pay for for the request that you approved? So there's a bunch of different ways to get this done. Is, should we talk about it at some future date when you're getting ready to, because you gotta?
Because this one isn't proper today.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you, you raised it, I just.
I know, I did, I did. I opened the door. I got it. I was just getting mixed up there. But the budget, I understand the budget. This is something that would be supplemental for the advisory board, right?
That'd be separate, yes.
Yeah, the advisory board is approved. We recommend to the advisory.
When do you think you'd be voting on that?
When's the advisory board meeting?
April sixteen.
What's right?
April sixteen.
That's what I thought. Okay. So a little ahead of the curve, but okay.
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 All right, so maybe sometime before.
All right.
What's what that would be? When would you anticipate voting on it?
You said April sixteen.
That's the advisory board, like the week or so before.
Yeah. I'd say like first meeting of April or something like that.
So you made a, you made a motion to take the budget under?
I think, yeah, make a motion, take the registry budget under.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Take care. All right. Now can I go to uh item number six, public comment? I know we took everything out of order today. Sorry about that, folks. So every week, uh that's, that's coming up, yeah. Public comment, item six. So um every week uh during our meetings, we ask the public if they have any uh specific public comment. Now's your time. And uh has anyone asked for permission to speak publicly this week?
Uh not directly to that definition, Commissioner, but I did receive a call from uh Mike, Michael Devey, who's the head of the Men's Golf Association at uh Boston Recreational Facility President's Golf Club. Michael was monitoring some of the vacancies that have occurred at the golf course, especially in the eve of the season opening, and he wanted to find out what the commissioner's plans were to backfill the assistant superintendent, the golf pro, and uh had a wonderful conversation with him. He wanted to express um his appreciation to the commissioner, specifically supporting the club. Um he has a long lineage with um um himself, his grandfather, his father being members, and and uh he loves the property. He wants to make sure that it continues to 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 really provide excellent recreational opportunities for people up there. Uh he was meeting with um his association, I think it was this past Saturday, and uh was going to convey the county's plans to backfill these positions. So good communication with uh one of the organizers of the Men's Golf Club. Up at the golf course, just want to pass along his best wishes to you and his appreciation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, John. So is there any public comment? Uh as uh Joe Shea, our chairman, would say, out in Zoom land, any public comment? Okay, hearing them, we're going to move on to item seven, old business. What do you have, John?
Uh no old business, sir.
Okay, personal matters for consideration is one personal matter.
I move notice of resignation of Dana Smith-Luquency as the head golf professional assistant director at the salary stated effective three, seven, twenty-five, so moved.
I'll second, I'll second the motion to accept the resignation, and I will say it's with a heavy heart because uh everyone here liked Dana quite a bit. And um he will be missed. He was a terrific guy, and he did a great job for the golf course. So thank you, Dana. Um item number seven is, oh, take the vote. Uh Richard, motion?
Yes, I did make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, um thank you. Thank you to Dana. All right, so number nine, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Chairman, I move the warrant list for approval. There are four items. Number one, twenty-five dash thirty-four payroll of the county, the sum one fifty-three, five ninety-eight, fifty-four cents, so moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Second item, payroll for the school, line item twenty-five dash thirty-four, percentage seventeen point two. It moves the sum of two thousand, six hundred eighty dollars, so moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved.
Third, expense of the county, uh line oh two oh four twenty-five, I will approve the sum seven hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars, eighteen cents, so moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved.
And fourth, I will approve for the expense of the school, line item twenty-five dash oh eight A, fifty thousand dollars, so moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, terrific.
Concludes that.
Thank you. So um great job. Now we're on to um number ten, report of the Norfolk County ARPA province. John?
Uh briefly, Commissioner, it's just one item. Um pleased to announce that the transfer tool has been approved. As you may recall, the last several weeks, we've been working with Clifton Larson to develop a mechanism by which communities requesting transfers during this um monitoring period um can establish not only a request but a process and a review cycle that mimics uh a pure and full and strong audit trail. Furthermore, last week I announced that the other counties in Massachusetts have adopted it or wish to use the same tool that we've developed. So uh yesterday, we had a uh dry run through the approved product, and it will work very simply. Communities who have an interest in requesting uh transfer of existing funds um to a excess capacity grant can do so. Um they will make the request in writing. Uh the request then gets put onto a form uh within the portal. The form is then reviewed by Clifton Larson to make sure that the new use for money is compliant with the intended purposes of that grant application. Once they have approved it, the county will enter the transfer document itself into the portal, probably be your bill, um and it'll be put before the commissioners for approval. Once the commission has approved the transfer, um the transfer will be executed within the portal, and the money will move into its new destination. Um it sounds simple, but it involves several steps that now um will be memorialized through um the creation of forms and the approval of forms, which makes our audit trail quite firm. So um we expect to start moving on at least one of those uh transfers within the next week or so. Um I think I mentioned that to you before, but um this uh this milestone is important. Happy to make make it uh useful to these communities and over the next several months, at least through the end of twenty twenty-six, I expect someone to make use of it. Thank you very much.
Anything else on ARPA? Okay, item eleven, report from the procurement department, bid openings and contract awards by industry is there are none.
Not this week, next week.
Next week, all right. Uh item twelve, December twenty twenty-four trial balance for acceptance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um unless we don't move approval, we move uh
Accept.
Accept. Moving accept the trial balance for, I believe that says twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
That's correct.
Make it smaller. We, uh the amount of thirty-seven million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and sixty-six cents.
So move second, all in favor, say aye. Great, thank you.
All right.
Okay, um item thirteen, fiscal year twenty-six departmental budget presentations. We've already tackled A, B, and C. We're all set with that. Now we're to item fourteen, report of the county director, John.
Thank you. Uh just a few items, commissioners. I want to let you know that FY twenty-four audit announced last week is underway. Members of the CBIZ staff have reported to Norfolk County. They are pulled up between our office and county treasurers this week for a couple of days. Um we're moving ahead and hope to have our audit done in the next month or two. Um so that'll be good, and we'll be fully caught up on our cycle. To give the commissioners a brief facility update that was provided to us by Mr. McGowan.
John reports that, uh, they've met with members of ABS. This is the company doing the automated building management system work at Dedham District Court. They've done a walkthrough to get the game plan for the HVAC project. This, uh, plan is to come back on Wednesday. They want to start each workday at six o'clock. Um, they're working on quarry certification processes, so, uh, things are underway there. Stoughton, uh, our carpenter, Jofini, is working on the ceiling and the judges benches. I'm not sure if I alerted the commissioners, but last week after a rainstorm, there was a, a significant leak in one of the, um, uh, courtrooms. And the leak caused us damage to a judge's bench and some other areas, which county staff immediately responded to, cleaned up, restored and fixed. Uh, but the judge's bench was damaged, and Joe's fixing that. The roof was too icy to get up onto to detect where this leak may have come from. Uh, we'll keep an eye on, obviously deal with it if it's in fact a structural problem. And then finally, um, as I mentioned, the roofers will be out to look at the leak at Stoughton next week. Um, and I also want to announce that the work in the commissioner's, uh, lobby downstairs is virtually complete. We have a few items to do relative to, uh, some wallwork, but other than that, I want to thank the painters, the carpenters, the electricians, and of course, uh, the carpet guy for doing such nice work. I think, I think you can see the improvement for the foyer downstairs presents well for the department. For the commissioners. Uh, next week, for the follow-up and final phase of your FY twenty-six budget presentation schedule, the commissioner's office uh, will be first. I'll be, before you, give you an idea of what the commissioner's office is looking at for FY twenty-six, as well as the debt schedule and miscellaneous expenses. Following that would be the AGE, and then finally, regional services. You'll have Mr. Buckley in to hear the final budget presentation before we turn, uh, the quest over to the director and myself to help build a balanced budget for the county throughout the month of March. Um, and then finally, as I mentioned, um, we've had a vacancy, obviously, with the, um, head golf assistant at, uh, Waltham Recreational Facility and the assistant superintendent vacancy. Those, the interviews are ongoing. We've been very active. Um, we are nearing the end of the assistant superintendent search, and we are beginning that of the golf pro. We have an interview tomorrow. And then three more interviews, I believe, before the end of the week with golf pro candidates into next week as well. Very strong market for those positions. So hopefully have some blue papers and some, uh, hires coming before you, uh, without delay. Uh, one foot in, I had a conversation with Carl Minor, just to make sure that he has an idea of what to request from outgoing, um, head golf professional Dana Smith regarding transition. It's a very, very busy time for the golf course. Our HR department is very active, reaching out to seasonal employees, securing their services. March, if golf weather provides it, um, as well as getting ready for tournaments and so forth. So, uh, there's a lot going on. We want to give our support to Carl during this transition period. He'll be speaking to Dana, making sure that, uh, he understands all the needs before Dana departs on March seventh. That's all I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Terrific. Item fifteen, emergency items, topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Richard, do you have anything?
No.
I'm good. John, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, item sixteen is adjournment.
I move adjourn at three twenty, Mr. Chief.
Um, motion been made. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting, and we look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you. Take care.
Okay, we got one minute. Way close to me. Honor of Robic, yes.
Um, I think we just closed it, but that's all right. Okay.
All right.